This evening, at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Kennedy, who will start the presentation.
Good evening Chairman Woodruff, members of the board and Dr. De La Torre. Tonight, we have the opportunity to share with you an update on our Vision 2020 Strategic Action Plan that was adopted in September 2015. Vision 2020 defines the five goals that the board adopted in April of 2015. This is a living document that outlines the means to which we will achieve or meet the vision statement that our district proudly carries. This is a five-year plan that is aligned to our campus improvement plan and district improvement plan. Next slide, please. The five goals that drive what we do each day in our district, our student achievement, our people, service excellence, finance and operations, and college and career readiness. Goals one and five represent the remarkable work and leadership of our campus principals, and several of them are here tonight, and we cannot thank them enough for the dedication and commitment that they give each day to our teachers and students. Our goals, our vision, can only be carried out through the behaviors that we exhibit on a daily basis. These behaviors are our guiding tenants.
I will review with you our guiding tenants. And on the screen are our guiding tenants, and the guiding tenants were developed along with the goals, with the input from stakeholders in our community, from our schools, to include students, parents, teachers, ancillary employees, community members. And the seven guiding tenants are the how that we do our work, or the lens through which we should be doing our work, that we should view everything that we do through that lens. And as you can see, the guiding tenants are accountability, which is holding ourselves and others accountable for supporting students and families. Respect, offering those we serve the opportunity to perform at their highest level. Consistency, engaging in transparent and aligned communication, and practicing the good of the system. Innovation, consistently looking for better ways to grow and change. Collaboration, for each one of us to make a personal choice to engage with others in a positive way, work towards solutions with a team approach. Stewardship, own our actions as good stewards of the resources. And integrity, trust that people do the right thing at the right time and in the right way. And this year, we have, last year, we really worked on our goals, and this year, we are continuing to work on the goals through the lens of the guiding tenants. And our administrators are embedding that in everything that they do on their campuses, and the teachers in turn will be embedding it with what they work on with their students and with their parents. And the guiding tenants are how we accomplish our goals. And Ms. Chacon will start with goal one.
Okay, I have the pleasure of doing student achievement. We are very happy of the increases that we made. We've had some great successes this year. And we also continue to have some areas of improvement, which we will cover in the next slide. We start off with our overall elementary scores. And you can see here, one big plus is we made a 14-point increase in science, in fifth grade science, as well as in our fifth grade math. And our sub-populations continue to make expectations and continue to show increases. In middle school, we also had an 11-point gain in science, and our subgroups and all of them continue to make increases slowly but surely. In our high schools, we're very proud of our increases in Algebra I. We made an 11-point increase in Algebra I. You can see on Algebra I, our sped students made 20-point increases. So we're proud of the work that we've done, as well as we're aware of the areas that we still need to continue concentrating. Our sped is one of the areas that we'll continue focusing on this year. We do have a plan in place to make sure that we're meeting their needs. As well as our English I is another area that we'll continue working with. And our social studies for the middle schools is an area of concentration. Goal one, these are the targets that were set by the board. And so we have to increase the number of students in Algebra by 2% of third grade meeting the standard eligibility for ELL students, as well as our sped students. So we have the targets that were set forth by you. And we're happy to show you a scorecard of our goal one, of progress of our goal one from 2015 to 2016. And here we can see, we've met several of our targets, which again, we've met that 2% that the board asked us and superintendent asked us to accomplish. And we have one target that we're going to continue working on and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our ELL students. And now I pass it over to Ms. Russell.
This is Woodruff Board of Trustees, Dr. De La Torre. I would like to discuss with you goal two, our people. And just a quick update on our human resources department. Our goal is to ensure that each of our employees is well-versed and prepared to educate each of our students as they walk into our classrooms. With that being said, our T-test rollout has gone according to schedule. And by the beginning of the school year, there'll be approximately 190 administrators that will be T-test trained and certified. So far this year, we've hired 56 elementary teachers, along with 58 secondary teachers to join the Sletta family to ensure that our students are adequately taken care of. And I'd like to turn it over to Robyn with Studer Group.
Just did that? Okay, sorry, I apologize. Good evening. So the first one is the employee engagement survey that has been administered twice, once in the fall of 2015, and then in the spring of 2016. As you can see from the slide, there was an increase in participation, which was a real positive. The overall district mean, there was a little bit of a slump, but it was still a great place to be and a great place to start. So this sets the target for next year, and our target for employee engagement is to reach that 4.08 again, and to maintain that. So the goal, our people focuses on our internal customers, our employees. And you can see goal two designated here from the Vision 2020 plan. Goal three is around service excellence. And when we worked with focus groups, this was an area that both internal and external customers thought was an area of growth. So we've spent some time working on that with district departments. This particular chart shows service quality criteria, around five particular criteria, accessibility, accuracy, attitude, operations, and timeliness. And you can see this was administered twice in the 15-16 school year. And the mean is extremely high. Our goal for each partner is a 4.5. Isleta had a 4.49 in both administrations. It's amazing, amazing. And there's continued growth there. The next service excellence piece is around those external, internal customers called our parents. And so we administered the first parent satisfaction survey in the spring of 2016. And I believe you received this report. And you can see, I think it's important to note, I circled the three items that are 4.5 or above. One, my child's learning is a high priority. My child has every opportunity to be successful. That's a wonderful one, to be a high performer. And then the other, I think, is important to the board, provide a safe and secure environment for my child to learn. And the overall mean is a 4.38, again, which is very, very high. And so what we want to do in the coming year for both of those is to really maintain that and perhaps inch up a little. Dr. De La Torre is not satisfied with where he is, but we're trying to convince him that that's really a good place to be. Sure.
On item number 13, I noticed the mean there. Is this an expectation issue on part of our parents? Or is this an expectation that we create and then we work at or struggle with? I guess that's the question I'm asking.
Yeah, I think it's one of those areas where as the school year progresses and people get more and more busy, and they become more and more familiar with students and their background. One of the first things that maybe is set aside too frequently is that vigilant communication with parents about their children. So we typically start very strong, and we tend to train or condition our parents to expect that. And then typically in the spring, when things start getting a little bit, when people start getting a little bit weary, it may be one of the first areas where a parent can see a distinct difference between the engagement they enjoyed in the fall and the engagement they tend to enjoy toward the end of the year. And so that's something that I think we're going to have to promote as an administrative team here at the central office all year, as a reminder that we need to continually engage and communicate with our parents and with the adults in our children's lives.
I appreciate that. And the other thing I would also say, too, is I don't see it as all a one-sided issue. I see it as a parent issue, as an engaged parent. They have a responsibility as well, too, to go to the schools, talk to the teachers, talk to the administrators, and be part of that process.
Absolutely.
So the goal then is, on the district services, is to maintain that 4.49. And then for the parent, again, is to maintain that 4.35. I would also like to say for the parent, Isleta Independent School District had the greatest participation of any of our partners. And we have some districts that are larger than yours, but your participation was 13,000-plus, which is really remarkable for the first time. So, nice work.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. De La Torre. With regard to finance and operations, as you'll see from slides presented by Mr. O'Neil in a few moments, the athletic enhancements are well underway, as well as the district-wide security projects. Both are expected to be delivered on time and on budget before the school year begins. And whenever possible, through the competitive process, and when it's fiscally prudent, we utilize local vendors. And as you well know, on June 29th, you awarded the contract for our external bond audit advisor to Townsend and Associates, and we've already been working with them with your internal auditor as the liaison. This evening, Michelle Morris and Sarah Languin are here to provide training to the district regarding best practices in bond oversight, as well as conflict of interest. And then on May 11th, you approved the official bond project budgets, and monthly updates commence this month. Can you advance us? There it goes. And then in response to concerns that you've expressed, along with internal audit findings, we've added two new targets to the plan. And we anticipate or expect to see exceptions of less than 5% in both your fixed asset existence, as well as the average daily attendance snapshot experience. And with that, oh, one more thing. Although this is not visible on the slide because the information is so detailed, if you'll notice, the page following this in your presentation is a full report on the bond projects. It provides you with the original budget, the actual expenditures to date, as well as encumbrances, and then an index to show you how much of each bond project has been spent to date. And that report will be available online to the BACH and to the public. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. O'Neil, and he's going to make his way back to his desk.
Good evening, Ms. Woodruff, Dr. De La Torre, and members of the board. Goal four was past the bond, which we were very successful doing in November. And so to create some new targets for this goal, we created these four. Bond projects will be completed on time, as we have promised through the whole process. There will be monthly bond updates that will be provided to the board, and this is something the board had requested. The bond oversight committee will meet quarterly, as per their charter. And bond policy and procedures manual will be developed with the VLK and representatives from YSD working together. So those will be our targets for goal four for the 2016-17 school year. What I'm going to do now is jump right into the bond update for you. This is information really right up to this morning at 6:30, and I'll share a couple of slides with you. This report had over 60 slides, but my colleagues talked me down to a manageable 30. So we'll go through this quickly. All right, the bond team, you can see, representatives from YSD. And this is all, you've got this presentation in your manual. You could look at and spend more time. Feel free to email me any questions you might have. Then on the right-hand side, you can see representatives from VLK that are working with us. What I'm going to go over real quickly is four of the projects that are currently under construction. This is the athletic enhancements, the outdoor athletic enhancements at the seven high schools, the new gym floor at Del Valle and bleachers. Riverside and Middle School and Constance Holbert structural repairs, and then give you an update on district-wide security entries. All right, first up is we have Beller High School. And this picture was taken last Thursday. The white on the field is the crush gravel. The black is called their E-layer. That's the last step before they start actually laying down the carpet. And like I said, this was a picture from last Thursday. My last slide, you'll see one as of this morning at 6:30. This project should be completed on August the 19th. They have their first game on September the 2nd, so it'll give them plenty of time to acclimate to the new field. So we're in good shape there. The softball, tennis, baseball lighting, the new scoreboards, those will all be completed on time by, in December. So when you see that 48% completion, that's talking about all the outdoor enhancements there at Beller High School, not the stadium turf. Couple pictures for you. On your left-hand side, that's the outfield fence at Bel Air. The posts are going up. On the right-hand side, you can see the softball. They're going to get a new backstop. They've started demolish the old softball backstop. On your left-hand side is the tennis courts lights going up. And then on the right-hand side is that E-layer I referred to. You can see the progress they've made from Thursday to this morning at 6:30. They're almost finished, should be finished, and be ready to start laying turf here real soon. Del Valle High School, they have now laid the turf. What they are doing is, they come back, and with the lettering and the center logo, they cut out, and then they stitch in the new logo in the end zone lettering. It's going to, has very unique color scheme. It's going to be gorgeous. If you get a chance, I recommend that you do go out. You also see that the numbers aren't showed here, but I was there Saturday, and they've stitched in the numbers on the side. Completion date for this project is also August 19th with the first home game, September the 2nd, so they'll have plenty of time to get ready. Sound systems, lighting, fencing will all be completed before the start of next season, which the completion date is December 2016. Here you get a look on the left-hand side. You have a picture of them adding the power that'll be needed to light up the fields, the softball, baseball, tennis courts. On the right is a picture of the lights going up at the tennis courts. Left-hand side, lighting for the tennis courts and the outfield fence for softball. Eastwood High School has been substantially completed. They're already using the field for practice. You can see, when we, in the newspaper, we bragged about it being very unique. You don't see any fields like this in other parts of El Paso. You can see they have their logo, Home of El Paso's Finest there. Also, the end zones are complete. They have a nice logo in the middle field. And like I said, they are currently using that facility. They will have their first home game on August 26th. They'll be the first ones. All the other outdoor enhancements will be completed by December 2016. Pictures, there's lights at the tennis courts. New long jump, triple jump runways on the football field right outside the end zone. You can see the 25-second clock there. We moved all the 25-second clocks from outside the track to inside the track for better visibility for the teams. Tennis court lighting post, and then once again, another shot of the football field. 65% completion for all the outdoor enhancements. JM Hank's High School substantially completed, currently using the field, practicing. First game is September the 2nd. They will be, they are currently at 38% completion. Hadn't put up the lighting yet at the softball or the baseball fields. Tennis courts, remember, we're going to go ahead, not as part of the bond, but we were able to get money to go ahead and redo their tennis courts. They were in horrible shape. So we haven't started putting up the lights there. That's the reason they're only at 38%. Some pictures, you can see outfield fencing at the baseball field. On your left-hand side, we were able to move the runways for the triple jump and the long jump to outside the stadium, as per the coach's request. On your right-hand side is the transformer that'll provide the power for the lighting. Parkland High School, they are almost complete August the 12th, which is this Friday. They'll be substantially complete, and we'll be able to turn over the field to them at that time. Runways for long jump, triple jump were moved outside the football field to a location just behind the softball field. Tennis lighting on your right. Pictures of the lighting outfield fencing going up at the baseball field. Riverside High School is substantially completed. The team is currently using the facility. There was some question about the lettering in the end zone. We have notified Helus. We're having a representative from Helus come out, and we're going to walk the field with them to get that situation corrected. But they are currently using the field. Yes, ma'am?
I didn't have to say anything.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. O'Neil, how soon will those letters be fixed?
We're going to, in order, if we can get them to agree what they're, we've got to come to an agreement on what they're going to do. And at this stage, we couldn't get it done in time for football season. We don't want to delay the use of this field, because the field's in good shape. There's nothing wrong with the field, it's just the lettering that we need to get corrected. So what we're hoping and working towards is after the season's over, before soccer really gets started, is to come in and get that situation taken care of.
Because I was talking to Dr. De La Torre, and he said it would be when the, it should be done by over the weekend before, when one of the times the team is playing out of...
And we will push for that, but I'm giving you the conservative answer, okay? But we will get it fixed.
Because I would hate for the constituents, taxpayers, to look at this, that it's not done right, and start, you know, saying that our taxpayer money was not correctly spent, and they just did whatever they wanted.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's what I'm afraid, because I'm already hearing it.
We're going to hold them to it. Like I said, we're getting a representative from Helus. We're not talking to anybody local. We don't want to talk to the supervisor. We want to talk to somebody from Helus. And so they will be coming in to review this.
Okay, so...
And we'll get it done as quickly as we can, and I'll update you, okay?
Yeah, I hope so, because they, they're very, we're having some of the Xs coming from out of town also, from classes 73, 74, 75, and 76. So I'd hate to, for them to see all this, and not done right, and all the money that was spent.
No, absolutely. And I can tell you, the people have gone out to see that field. They love the color combination. And this is another one of the fields that we had to get a special color for to match that burn orange, because it is such a unique color. But the campus, the players, people I've talked to are very pleased with the look of the field, but we do need to correct that issue.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, just some pictures of the lighting going up at the baseball and softball field. We have the outfield fence going up. We're working with the schools, making sure we get the light posts where they're supposed to be in the backstop, so we're working with the schools. All right, Isleta High School had a little bit of an issue here. The field's going to be completed on August 23rd. An issue I'm talking about, remember, we talked about each one of the fields having stabilization. And what we budgeted for was for six inches of stabilization in each one of the fields. After they did all their testing, what they found is that Isleta High School needed 24 inches of stabilization. So we're going to do it right, and like Ms. Duñez is saying, we don't want to rush and then be unhappy with what we get at the end. So it's getting 24 inches of stabilization. They were supposed to finish up the center section today, because they have to do a density test every time they do what they call lift. They do the density test. They should got that done today, and they'll be able to go ahead and start laying the crush rock and the E-layer. They have crews that are working Saturday, Sunday. They have committed to us that they're going to have the field ready by the 23rd. Their first game is September the 2nd. That'll give them approximately two weeks to practice on the field. One of the beauties of these type of fields, it's not like the old AstroTurf, which was a real adjustment period, because it was so unique. This is like playing on super grass, sort of. And so the acclimation, getting used to these, will be a lot less. But they'll have plenty of time to get ready for their first game. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question. Where would they be practicing?
Currently, right now, they're practicing at the middle school.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a bad deal. They just go right across the way there to the middle school. Principal has been very good assisting us with that. They just started practice yesterday, in fact, today. Some of them had midnight madness last night. Some more pictures of the lighting for the baseball field. You can see the runways. Now let's jump over to Del Valle High School and their new gymnasium floor. This should be completed by the 23rd, I believe. Or, excuse me, the 15th is for this floor. What they're doing right now is the graphics on the floor, the painting of the logos, you know, where it says Del Valle Conquistadors. They were allowed to choose the scheme they wanted. So floors laid, they're just going now and doing the graphics, and then they'll do the ceiling. The bleachers, it's a different story. It's going to take a little bit of time to get the bleachers in, but should be in by November. So principal's aware of it. He has no issues. We're in good shape there. Couple more pictures of the floor being put in. All right, talking about Constance Holbert now, and the structural issues they have. Substantial completion date will be August the 15th, which is next Monday, just when the teachers return. There was four classrooms in the hallway that had to have the repairs. You could see some of the work, what it looked like. And on your right, you can see one of the classrooms that's completed. What they're doing at the end of this week will be putting tile down and the case work, the book shelving, and those things. But they're almost finished at Constance Holbert. Riverside Middle School, we've run six different tests on the soil there to make sure that we got it right. This one's requiring a little bit more work. You will see tonight, we're asking for additional funds to make sure that we do do this right. We're going to do what is called slab jacking, and I'll show you some pictures. You'll be able to see a little clearer. This should be a substantial completion date of the 26th. The hallway will be done before the students return, so they will have access to the hallways. We'll continue work until the 26th on the floor. That's what it looks like. Some of the work, you can see the hallway, we had, we're replacing the sewer line in the middle of the hallway. And like I said, that will be turned over before the students return, so they'll have full access to that hallway.
Will the pillars be installed also to lift up the foundation?
Yes, ma'am. And if you look at this picture I just turned to, that's what, those are jacks that hold up the floor. And then what they're going to do is they're going to, the slab jack is, they pour the slab material underneath this now to support the floor. This is a long-term solution. This is not a Band-Aid to the problem. We should not have any problems. What caused the problem is when they cemented the river, okay? Now it dried up all the water, the groundwater that used to be around it, and so everything was sinking, okay? Now with the slab jack, we'll be able to go ahead and boost up that floor. And like I said, it will be a long-term solution to this problem.
Now, will that be filled with cement?
Yes, ma'am. Grout?
Because I saw a lot of gravel there.
Right, and that's what you put on the base, and then they put the grout in, and then finish it off with the cement.
Okay.
All right, district-wide security, the visitor management system will be incomplete by this Friday. By the start of school, we will have the front door entry. Then we've also added, which we're paying for with our district funds, is the card reader, where people will come to get access. If they don't use the front entry, where you push the button and they're buzzed in, employees, very similar to what we have at Isleta Pre-K, employees will have the card, which they swipe that will give them access in and out of the front door. I'm not going to go through each one of the design, yes, ma'am? Okay, they will all be, the elementaries will be done by the 20th. The rest of the schools will be done by the 23rd. There was four schools that were not included in the bond, because at that point, we're talking about consolidation. talking about consolidation, but we're gonna go back and make sure that Cadwalter, cuz they're gonna be there for the, which is now the new Thomas Manor, make sure they have a front door entry. South Loop member was talked about a consolidation. Tejas, so those four that were not included, everybody's gonna have it. All, all our schools. Tejas, Cesar Chavez, all the schools.
Is that better? The, the schools in, you know, the Del Valle area are not included in this list here, so that was a question. No, Ms. Duñez, that was fine.
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna get all the schools.
And they'll be done by when, did you say?
Okay, the home pass will be done by this Friday. That's the visitor manager, you know, when you come in with your ID card and your driver's license, and you get a pass. The front door entry for the elementaries will be the twentieth, all the rest of the schools the twenty-third.
And let me ask you a question, with regard to that card reader, how much did that cost?
The addition, the card reader for the front will be approximately sixty thousand dollars.
One more question. When I attended the BAC meeting, and one of the, the comments that you made during the BAC meeting was that you were going to try to, I guess, get the visitors to go in a certain way so that, you know, the security can, can, can be enhanced. What, what plans, or how far along is that plan?
What we're doing is we're evaluating each one of the campuses, and have you been to the movie theater when they want you to go?
Right.
And they have those, it's a silver thing, and then they have the, where they stretch it out and they guide you in the office? That's what we're looking to do for those campuses, where there's the space between the front door and the office, so we will guide them into the office.
And is, how is that gonna be monitored? I know a lot of times, you know, there's, most of the time, there's people there, but there are times when there are not people present that, you know, are going to be seeing who's coming in, or, you know...
Yes, ma'am, and that is a great question. And what we always preach, you know, we have our quarterly meeting, safety district meeting, and safety is a, is a campus, it's all the employees. So if I see somebody walking down the hall that doesn't have a visitor's pass, then I'm gonna ask them, can I help you, and take them to the office? We talk about this with the high schools, with the multiple entries into the schools. The only way we're gonna be able to secure the campuses, all of us working together, and when somebody's not there with their ID badge, a student doesn't have their ID badge, is can I help you, and then walk them to the front office? That's the way we're gonna be able to secure those campuses.
Now, as part of the overall security plan that we have, is there a portion of that where you do incognito kind of testing to see, testing the system, so to speak?
Uh, no, ma'am, we haven't done that here. We've done that in other districts with Dr. Delatorre, but we haven't. Now, what we are gonna do this year is we're, and we shared this with the principals, we're gonna service excellence, is one of our goals, is we're gonna make phone calls to the schools, say we're a parent, we're gonna send people out to the schools, say, hey, I wanna come register my child, just to kinda get a feel for what type of customer service. And then we're gonna recognize those schools at our leadership meeting every month that have provided great customer service. So maybe we go back and do what you're recommending and see, are those side doors locked? Do, are people being stopped?
I mean, cuz I think, you know, I mean, having a plan is, is great and wonderful, but if you're not implementing the plan, it's, you know, it really is just paper.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we need to have that, you know, oversight to make sure that it's, it's being followed.
We've done that, and you're right, it's a, it is a good test. It gives you a feeling for where you're really at. We could have all the great plans in the world, but you're a hundred percent correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I have, Mr. O'Neal?
Ma'am.
Is this including also the main system, the intercoms and stuff? Or it's just the cameras and the security?
It's just gonna be the front door.
Oh, just the front door?
Yes, ma'am. It'll, as you walk up to the front door, you'll buzz, there'll be a little, it's a box about this high, big, with the screen on it. You'll say who you are, you, to show your identification, they'll buzz you in, the front door opens, and you go to the office.
Okay.
Like Ms. McLean's saying, some of our schools, there's a little distance from the front door to the office, and her question is, how are you gonna make sure they get to the front, front office and they don't wander around the building?
Is it something like what we have in a sludge of pre-K?
Exactly, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's exactly what it is. All right, real quickly, I included, I'm not gonna go over all the design, the projects, if you could advance for me, please. Those are the projects that are currently under design, but I included it in under tab three, little printouts for each one of them to give you an idea of where we're at with each one of those projects for your review. And like I said, if, when you get home, you look at it, you have any questions, let me know, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. At this point, I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Berserto, I believe. Nope. Oh, we have one more slide, I'm sorry. And I'll turn it back over to Ms. Sleeper.
It's actually my goal, but this concludes Goal Four, and it just shows you a progress of the scorecard for the goal we've demonstrated. Of course, we passed the bond, but we've also, something that was important to the board is to demonstrate an annual decrease in reliance on state and federal funds, and we've done that. We've decreased the use from fifteen, sixteen, from fifteen to sixteen by two, less than two percent. So we're excited about that, and we're gonna continue working with our state and federal funds to make sure those funds are going out to our students, which was the purpose of those funds. All right, Mr. Berserto, you're next.
Good afternoon, Dr. Delatorre and esteemed board members. Goal Five is college and career readiness. Here in this graph, you'll see that our growth in all ELC tested areas, and one thing to accentuate here is that as an organizational system in high school ELC performance, we lead the region in four of the five categories. We are number one. Number two in biology behind Canutio. In addition to that, you'll notice that the growth in Algebra I on the right hand of eleven point four, what I wanna share is that as a state, there was flat growth. So the aggregate average as a state in Algebra I was eighty percent. The previous year, eighty percent this year. However, here in the Southern Independent School District, we had an eleven point four gains as an organization. Great job to our principals, our teachers, and staff. Next is our Level Three Advanced. And so what this demonstrates is an organization, not only are we meeting the bottom low performance, but we're also meeting the high. So as an organization, we're moving all students. And you'll notice we have gains in just about every single category in Level Three Performance. Again, look at Algebra I, nineteen point five percent to twenty-seven point seven percent, eight point two gains. Great performance there. The targets for college and career readiness are increase the number of students performing an advanced level on ELC by one percent, increase the number of students performing at advanced level on STAR by one percent, increase the number of students enrolled in dual credit courses by two percent, and increase the number of students earning a three-year higher on AP exams, Advanced Placement. To date, our targets, as you'll notice, and in particular in dual credit, we've done a great job as an organization, where we've increased it from nine hundred and eighty-nine to one thousand two hundred and thirteen for a twenty-three percent gain in dual credit. Phenomenal work by our principals, teachers, and staff. Our AP results are still pending, and we will have that to you as soon as we can validate that information. At the very bottom, you'll notice that we have our STAR and ELC Level Three Performance, and meeting our targets there as well. So in closing, this is tonight's presentation. Thank you for your leadership in our, in sharing our vision and where we are in moving our kids forward and providing the best quality experiences for our students. Lastly, we do wanna congratulate and acknowledge our principals here in the back, because it's through their work, working in conjunction with our teachers, staff, is where we are able to move the needle for all our students. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for our people? Ms. Duñez?
I wanna thank the principals, and good luck, and hope we have a good year also this year. Thank you.
Also, okay, we need to thank the students too, as well as everybody else.
Again, I mean, the, the results were off the charts. Congratulations to all of you, administration, Dr. Delatorre, all our directors seated up here, all of you in, you know, in the audience, thank you. You all did a fantastic job. Thank you. And you know that this board has continuously been looking at, okay, we're here now, how are we gonna get to the next step, right? So applause to all of you, and, and thank you very much for your hard work. I know that we sit here and we get the results, but you all do, you know, you all are the boots on the ground. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the other board members' comments to the principals. Thank you so much for all your hard work. I know there's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, and a lot, emphasis on the tears part of it sometimes, but thank you again for all your hard work. And I think the other part I, I like the most about not only improving scores, is improving attitudes, and, and just improving the general perception out there. So I think that's, that's hard to do, and it says a whole lot about the leadership that we have in our school districts. So again, thank you all very much. Congratulations.
And I'm gonna keep the applause going. I've been seeing around El Paso, the school boards, it says the district, the choice, and you guys are the ones that are making it that, and, and I totally agree with that. I, I appreciate all of your hard work. Thank you so much. And Dr. Delatorre?
It was just mentioned that some of the board members may not know all of you, so it'd be terrific if I could just take a moment to introduce you in the front row, Dr. Henson. He's the principal at Parkland High School. If you'll stand and give us one of those beautiful sermons. Not, not right now, thank you. You all know Dana Daron, he is our principal at the New Bel Air Middle School. Ms. Penny is with us this evening, she's a great leader at Valley View Middle School, Javier Salgado, Parkland Middle School. The Ever Ready Energy Bunny, Mr. Garcia, Bel Air High School. Tony Acuna wants his building painted, Del Valle High School. We're working on it, sir, we're working on it. The next row, please, I can't see all of you, so please take a moment and stand, and I'll just go right down. Well, there's Ms. Peralis, she's new principal at Camino Real Middle School. She's gonna do an outstanding job. Career Tech Ed Fernando, give us a wave. Michelle Kerwall, working with our College and Career Advanced Studies world, avid. Christine, come on up. Director, secondary or high school ed. Dr. Calzada, there she is, Rio Bravo Middle School. Who's next to you? New principal, John Valdez at Riverside Middle School. Ms. Bet, Medlin, Ms... What?
Huela.
Pauline. They're the ones that are confusing me, cuz I'm, Pauline Huela, Indian Ridge Middle School.
Reyes.
You know, Mr. Martinez at the adult school. The Eastwood High Schools Armenia Smith. David Boatright, Eastwood Middle School. Mr. Martinez is with us from Eastwood Knowles International School. There's Dr. Chavez from, no, Dr. Martinez from Caesar Chavez. I panicked when they asked me to do this. Mariano Levas, new principal at Desert View Middle School. You know, Mr. Martinez from Tejas School of Choice. Plato. Anyone else? Please say no. Thank you all. As you can tell, the, the board is extremely pleased with the work that you're all doing, and like I, no complacency in this school district. We strap on those tennies, we leave it all on the field, and I can promise you a great two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. So thank you all for being here tonight. It speaks volumes of your commitment and dedication to our students. Thank you. With that, I believe it's time for a presentation from our guest. If you'll approach the dais and tell us a little bit about yourself, and we'll start the training.
Good evening.
Do you wanna give them a minute? You're not all leaving, are you?
Yeah, I'm gonna take a break.
What about that dedication and commitment? We'll give them two minutes to go ahead and excuse themselves if they'd like to. I know there's a lot of work to be done. School year starts in a couple of weeks, so please take this time to excuse yourself.
I'm just showing...
There's a lot of work to be done. All right.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Delatorre and Board of Trustees. First, I wanna say thank you for serving. I always like to thank the Board of Trustees for the time that they put in. I've been in school business for, I don't wanna say how many years, for thirty-plus years, and I always admire school boards and what they do and what they have to put up with, so thank you. I'm Becky Bunty, and I'm with Texas Association of School Business Officials. Our mission is to train school business officials all over the state of Texas. It's a big state, and we travel from all, to all ends of the state, and provide training and curriculum. We use our practitioners for curriculum as well as experts, and I've got two experts with me here today from a law firm that we use a lot, Rogers, Morris, and Grover. So I've got Mickey Morris, Michelle Morris is her official name, but I call her Mickey, and Sarah Langual. And they're going to do some of the training that they've done for us over the years, and they're our go-tos on these two topics. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, good evening. I'm Mickey Morris, I'm with Rogers, Morris, and Grover, and, and I had to chuckle when everyone got up and left, because we are a school law firm, and I am extremely specialized in my practice area. I really can't speak intelligently about anything having to do with student law issues or personnel law issues. My entire school law practice has been devoted to construction and procurement in facilities and business. So I'm used to getting very excited about a procurement or a drainage or a construction issue, and having everybody else in the law firm who's not in my section go, I'm out of here. But I'm really thrilled to be here tonight, because this, like Becky said, this is a training that I've done in three hours. It's not gonna be that long this evening, and have done it from board level all the way down to maintenance department level. It's a very important topic, and when you're entrusted with taxpayer funds, you wanna make sure that you are being good stewards and that the district is engaging in, in the best practices for the management of a bond program. Thank you. Your role is different from the administration's role, and, and so I've really tried to gear this presentation to the bond program oversight from your standpoint. And, you know, one of your, one of your biggest roles is a conduit to the public as well in both ways. And so what, some of the actions that are most critical to the success of a bond program, you're not gonna see on a day-to-day basis, but some of the most critical decisions are yours to make. Your role, of course, and you've already done this, is to select the project delivery methods, and, and that's already been done, and that's an important step, and I know you all have received training on what the various methods were. You also approve procurement results, and some of that has been done. I know there are some projects left where that will happen soon. You approve contracts that are not within the superintendent's authority, and that is gonna largely be all of the construction contracts and the guaranteed maximum price amendments that will be coming to you for the construction manager at risk projects. Change orders. You've delegated some authority for that, but in large part, when, when unforeseen conditions occur, or additional scope is needed, you're the decision-maker on perhaps taking funds out of contingency and adding to project budgets to cover things like that. If, heaven forbid, something goes wrong with a vendor and a contract needs to be terminated, or a contractor needs to be terminated, that is your decision to make. You can act to delegate all of these powers by local policy, and some of these decisions you have delegated with change orders, for example. You also will approve membership and purchasing cooperatives. If job order contracting needs to be used through a cooperative, you approve the membership to that, and the expenditures for any job order over your local policy limit, and that's a hundred thousand dollars here. What I've noticed in the, in the seventeen years I've been working with school districts on, on their bond programs, there's a trend, and there, there's some things that the successful owners do. And I wanna share that with you. And I want to share that with you. And one, and I see from the presentation, is both through the board and the bond oversight committee, you're monitoring the as planned versus actual costs and schedules. And that's very important because you want to stay, of course, ahead of problems and ward off problems and not be catching up and behind when you have budget overruns or schedule delays. You're requiring periodic reporting and that's very important, not only for purposes of mining the store, but for transparency, public transparency. You want the public to see, here's what's going on with your dollars, here's what's going on with your campus. You want to have clear and efficient policies, delegating authority. I applaud you for having a policy, because not all districts do, that delegate some authority for change orders because it's very difficult for the folks on the ground to keep projects moving forward if they've got to bring every single change order to the board for approval and of course, the work comes to a halt waiting for the next board meeting to happen. So that's a very good practice. Address defects and delays immediately. One thing I've noticed, and this goes in my last bullet point, is the nice guys finish last. If you're a school district that doesn't hold vendors accountable or has liquidated damage provisions in your contracts, but you don't have the stomach to use them, vendors figure that out. You know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil and when, when they're falling behind on multiple projects or there's been a lot of rain or, or things are piling up on them, the owners that they know are going to hold them accountable, those are the ones that they're going to send their crews out to. And so it's really important to have the stomach to enforce contractual remedies. I know this step has already been done as well and you all, this is a great practice for a smooth bond program, is to pre-qualify and select your professional service providers. As you go into a bond project, you want to have, or a bond program, you want to have your survey, surveyors, your geotecs, your materials testing company, all of your architects in a pool and ready to go so that you can get folks out to do what they need to do with just instructions from the facilities department without having to come back to the board and approve contracts or procurement results. You have a program manager. What is a program manager? And a program manager really is your agent to oversee all of the bond projects. It's a project manager for multiple projects or a program. They are your fiduciary agent by law. That's the highest degree of care that a vendor has to provide to a school board, much like accountants and auditors and attorneys, that is the highest degree of care. They will oversee the design process, the procurement process, the construction process, the warranty process. And we're going to talk real briefly in the next slide about the difference between a program manager. People understand that a program manager is some form of construction manager. So why do I need both a program manager and a construction manager at risk? We're going to talk about that very briefly. But one of the things is by law, because the program manager is acting as a project manager as your fiduciary agent, they cannot be a contractor on the project. They can't participate in any form of the construction and that's very important. Their duty is to you to manage and to advise and to consult and to oversee. So you will have a program manager, but you also have construction managers at risk. And so I just want to point out for you some of the differences between the two because oftentimes people think it's overlapping or duplicative and it's not. They, they serve two very important roles and distinct roles. So your program manager, we talked about their duties there on, on the left, but on the right, you'll see a construction manager at risk. They have a lower duty of care because they're really acting just as a general contractor on the project. They're called a construction manager because they will manage the subcontractors, but they also participate in the design process to make sure that you have better drawings and specifications that work collaboratively with the architect to make sure that when they go out and build the project, you don't have a lot of change orders. A lot of the issues have been vetted up front before the subcontractors bid on the project. And they can self-perform some of the work, whereas a program manager, they're acting solely as your agent on your behalf. They cannot participate in any of the construction. Your program manager, and I saw this on one, on your goals, is, your program manager is going to develop procedures that all of the vendors will be following so that there's uniformity across the projects on certain decisions that are going to be made weekly on every project. How change orders are going to be processed and approved, how contingency is going to be spent, the payment process, schedule reporting process. And so that's the procedures manual that you saw referenced to earlier that a program manager puts together. It's kind of the execution plan for the bond program. They will act as your project managers for the individual projects, again, on your behalf. You know, the contractor has their own onsite project manager acting for the contractor, but your program manager acts as the project manager on your behalf. They will assist with resolution and prevention of claims. If there are additional days that a contractor needs or, or change orders that, that result in additional funds being paid and there's disputes about that, then your program manager will help facilitate the resolution of those disputes to ward off any bigger problems down the road. They're going to help with the reconciliation of budget and cost and scheduling issues from the as planned versus actual so that you can see that. And they will assist the district with the reporting to the bond oversight committee and to the board on a periodic basis. I don't need to go through every detail of this because I know you all have been trained on the difference between what is a construction manager at risk and a, and a general contractor under a CSP method. But I included these slides just for your reference so that you can see stage by stage how they differ. If you all have any questions that you want to ask while I'm here as to the timing, how they compete, just going through these. I know, I know you've had this training before. How they participate or not in the design phase, how they're paid, how their pricing is determined. And so, for example, when you all are approving a competitive seal proposal project, you know the cost of construction right then and there. You have a lump sum bid. When you're picking your CM at risk, you have no idea yet what the project is going to cost. You still just have a budget. That comes later. That comes with the guaranteed maximum price proposal. So I laid out these differences for you side by side, how subcontractors are selected as between the two. Kind of the differences on, on how they operate during the construction phase, given one's role in design. How the payments are handled. And one of the important things that you'll notice, you all have hired an auditor, a great auditing firm, by the way, that I've worked with throughout the state on other CM at risk projects. They do a wonderful job. And I think one of the things that makes owners most successful, especially when they're using construction manager at risk, is to really take advantage of all of the rights you have to audit and try to capture those cost savings so that your projects are not at the GMP, they're below the GMP. Some of the legal protections that you all have in place, just briefly, all of your projects from the construction side, whether it's a CM at risk or a general contractor under a CSP method or a job order contractor, depending on the size of the job order, they have to furnish performance and payment bonds. So a performance bond protects you if there is a default, an abandonment, a termination of a contractor, if there is a delay in substantial completion or some other material breach of the contract, if they don't honor their warranty obligations or don't remedy a defect. You have a performance bond to protect you from your financial losses should that occur. You also have a payment bond and oftentimes, one of the most difficult positions that board members get put in is if a subcontractor hasn't been paid on a job. Oftentimes, you know, they will go to a trustee and say, I haven't been paid. And one thing that protects you all is that a payment bond on a public works project is there for the protection of those subcontractors. And oftentimes, you may not realize there's some legitimate dispute going on between a contractor and a subcontractor and that's the reason the subcontractor hasn't been paid. You all are not responsible for paying unpaid subcontractors or forcing the contractor to pay them. That's what the bonding company is there to handle, those claims and those disputes. So very rarely should a public owner be getting involved in a payment dispute between a contractor and a subcontractor when that bond is in place. That doesn't mean you don't want to know if subcontractors are not getting paid because that could signal a problem, a cash flow problem with a contractor or a delay or some defect. But aside from understanding and trying to ward off a cash flow issue from the owner's side, you don't have to get involved in the details of why a sub's not getting paid or guaranteeing their payment. That's what the payment bond is for. Safety, another big concern on bond projects and your program manager will help develop some baseline safety requirements and make sure that all of the contractors and subcontractors working on the projects have their safety programs and safety plans in place. And in Texas, while it is an opt-out state for workers' comp on public works projects, all workers have to be covered by workers' compensation. So there is a remedy for any injured worker working on your school construction sites. And that's it for my portion. Are there any, any questions?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
I was wondering, because I noticed you talk about change orders.
Yes.
And we're already experiencing some of that. How normal is that in the process to have change orders and how many, I mean, is there like a signs that shows you that you, wow, you need to be careful because you've got way too many or?
It really depends. All projects are going to likely have some change orders and there's really two reasons that you have change orders. One is unforeseen conditions and that means two different things, depending on whether it's a construction manager at risk or a competitive seal proposal. You would expect to see less of, of those types of change orders on a CM at risk project because the contractor has the ability to participate in design, but they can't see everything. They can't see nor are they expected to know what's behind the walls, what conditions are under the ground, what they're going to encounter when they actually start a renovation project or start excavating for a new construction project or abating asbestos. So those things are going to happen. There should be less of those in CM at risk because of their involvement in design, but there will still be some. Competitive seal proposal, you typically will have more change orders, especially on a renovation project because they're only building the plans that were handed to them. They didn't get to participate in the design process. So they're bidding on the plans and specifications as they exist on bid day and they didn't have an awful lot of time to review them. So there will be differing conditions once the project actually starts from those assumed in the drawings and specifications. Also, there is a standard amount of errors and omissions in drawings and specifications. Even the best architects, there are going to be little details that get flushed out during the construction phase. And, and that will entitle a contractor to a change order, more so on a CSP project because they didn't participate. In a CM at risk project, you actually expect those gaps to be more filled in, for the drawings and specs to be tighter because of their participation design. So that's one area where you will see change orders. The second area is owner requested scope changes where there are programmatic decisions being made throughout the construction phase that are important to you, that you may not realize are important to you from a logistical or feasibility standpoint until you're actually there. Like, wow, you know, we really would like to have a projector, you know, in this, a projector screen in this room. Things that, that come about that if they're small things, you may be able to fund them through your contingency, but if they're bigger things, programmatic changes or design changes that you all want to make, then that will also be the basis of a change order.
Anybody else? Ms. McLean?
We, oh, let's see, is this on again? We have a master construction contract. Is that something that you had a chance to review? Because in the past, we've had issues with not this bond, but previous bond with the construction contract itself. There being some holes in the contract that later led to issues with regard to payments and such.
I have not had a chance to review them. I, I did see an example of a template for purposes of looking at your audit provisions, but no, I have not had a chance to go through the whole set of contract documents from soup to nuts.
Thank you.
Ms. Duenas?
Yes. How about on deadlines? Are there penalties?
That is up to you. So typically, owners do insert a liquidated damage provision in their contracts and the amount of the daily provision, now it's not allowed to be a penalty. What it is, is a contractually agreed upon amount that you can assess against the contractor to compensate you for damages that you could suffer on a daily basis because of delays. Obviously, if, if a campus is late in opening, you could have delays, whether it's, you know, the loss opportunity for transportation savings, portable rentals at other sites where attendance was going to be alleviated or overcrowding was going to be alleviated. So it's important when you're setting a deadline for a project to ask yourself, how critical is this deadline and how much of a burden is it going to be on us if we don't meet it? And to set that daily LD rate accordingly. What I recommend to clients is that if you see a project schedule slipping, you'll see it slipping early on and it's something that, that, you know, don't pray for a recovery. Start addressing it right then and there and ask, you know, the contractor, hey, you're, you're slipping, how are you going to catch up? And, and push them to accelerate to get back on schedule. The longer delays snowball, the harder it is for them to catch up. And so, you know, I, it's important to maintain good relationships with the contractor. You don't want to have to live out the, you know, the entire project going through, you know, a friendly divorce, but you also want to let them know that, look, this important deadline is very important and we will assess LDs if we need to.
Is that also a manager's position to do? Push the?
The program manager? So the program manager's role, it really, one, is to just track the schedule and try to identify if there are delays occurring. The contractors are required to update the schedule with their pay applications every month. They have weekly job site meetings. So there are a lot of opportunities to catch it and find out what's going on. But yes, the program manager should be staying on top of that and reporting and should be assisting the owner because it's, they're the owner's fiduciary agent in making sure that the contractual remedies are exercised. And not just the assessment of LDs at the end, but hey, we need a recovery schedule. We want to know what overtime is going to be worked over the next few weeks, working Saturdays, you know, adding crews to catch up.
How many of you see the, the project is going for three weeks with no construction and just open?
Well, you would want to inquire.
And the deadline is almost there.
Yeah, you would want to inquire what's going on. You know, are they late in finishing up another project across town and the people aren't available? Are there sub crews, are there subcontractors not available? Has there been a weather issue? It could be a legitimate, or are they waiting on some important testing results? So oftentimes, something will happen, they may be waiting for the results of soil borings or, or something else that the engineer needs to resolve before work can start or progress or resume. So there should be a reason and, and you want to find out what the reason is to know who's responsible for the delay. Sometimes it is the owner because additional testing needs to be done and sometimes it is the contractor, sometimes it's the architect who may be slow in getting submittals back.
That's what I mean, because of the deadline and the deadline being so close and then wanting to extend it, extension. I mean, that's why we, I asked you about the penalty.
Yeah.
I've got a question.
With regard to the inquiry, the inquiry for an example that Ms. Duenas set forth would come from the-
would come from the program manager, or would it come from a trustee?
Well, it could come from anybody. I mean, I would imagine that if you all are asking about it, I mean, surely they know about it, and it could be being worked on, even though you may not be hearing the details of it at your level.
The reason to have a program manager is so that those issues are handled by the professionals, correct?
Correct.
And that they're on top of those projects.
Correct.
And that, I would imagine, their responsibility to the board would be to give us an update and let us know what, you know, issues have come up and how they're being addressed, correct?
If there are delays on a project that are apparent in monthly reporting, then yes, you would want to see, you know, what's the reason for the delay and what's being done to address it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I am now going to turn it over to Sarah Lengua, who's my partner, and she's going to talk to you about conflicts of interest.
As the daughter of a 36-year educator, one of her jobs, my mother's jobs, was a principal, and I will assure you, I think that that is one, the hardest job in the country. So to those of you who are principals and assistant principals who are still here, congratulations. It looks like y'all are doing great work, and best of luck for the start of the school year. I'm very happy to be here with you tonight to discuss conflict of interest. Importantly, for those of you here in the front, on the front desk, as well as in the audience, much of this presentation not only applies to the board, but also to those of you, thank you to this past legislative session. So jumping right in, a conflict can exist in multiple circumstances, and we don't just have one statute that addresses conflict of interest. Now, thanks to last legislative session, we have four, or three, rather, I'm sorry. No, four, sorry. 171, which is a substantial interest in business property, provision of the government code, which talks about disclosure of interest in property, the big one, 176, which is income and gifts from vendors and brand-new family relationships. And then also added this past legislative session is HB 1295, which is disclosure of interested parties. And I brought with me tonight, on the front page of the Houston Chronicle, back in February, after this law went into effect in January, the headline is "Critics: Ethics Law Too Broad." And it is incredibly broad, and we'll get to that in a second. Starting out with Chapter 171 of the Texas Local Government Code, a school district may enter into a transaction involving a business entity or real property in which a school official or a person related to a school official, in the first degree by affinity or consanguinity, that's marriage or blood, has a, quote, "substantial interest," only if the official does two things. First, files an affidavit before any vote or decision in the matter involving the business entity or the real property, and abstains from further participation. Notably, you'll see that this provision in statute is written in a positive way. It says that you may enter into a transaction. So here, if there's a conflict, the statute is not prohibiting the contract, but it is requiring that you, as a trustee, both file an affidavit before taking any vote, and abstain from further participation. What's important here is it's not just abstain from voting, and we have to assume that the legislature meant what it said when it says abstains from further participation. That means if you have a conflict under Chapter 171, you should, in my opinion, not engage in any participation with regard to that action. You should not engage in the debate, you should not ask questions, you should not try to convince your fellow board members whether or not they should vote for that particular contract, any participation at all. I had one of my clients who had a conflict under 171, one of the board members did, actually get up from his seat when that item was addressed on the agenda and go sit in the audience, to where he wouldn't even give the appearance of participation in that circumstance. Importantly, the board's also required to take a separate vote on any budget item that relates to that particular transaction. There's some definitions here. You'll see that the definition of business entity is very broad, basically anything that we would come to mind and think of, what is a business entity? Substantial interest is particularly defined. It's when you own at least 10% of the voting stock or shares of the business entity, or either 10% or $15,000 of the fair market value of the business entity, or, and here's the one that is most often triggered, funds received from you, from the business entity, exceed 10% of your gross income for the previous year. And then substantial interest in real property is if you have, your interest in the property is more than $2,500 or more. Chapter 176, now this is a law that's separate and apart from 171, which we just went over, and I should have started this presentation with reminding you that these rules don't only apply to your bond program. Of course, they absolutely do, but they apply to any contract with a vendor at all, with the district, not just your bond program. So Chapter 176 applies to local government officers as well as to vendors. There's different requirements for both. It expand, HB 23, which was passed this past legislative session, has an expanded definition of local government officer. 176 always applied to the Board of Trustees, and most districts, by local policy, had that provision applied to the superintendent, but now, by law, it applies not only to the Board of Trustees and to the superintendent, or other individuals who's been designated as an executive officer, but now the definition expressly includes any agent of a school district who exercises discretion in the planning, recommending, selecting, or contracting of a vendor. You can see where that pool just got much broader, because if somebody, for example, assists with scoring a procurement, you do a CSP for books, for example, and you have a selection of principals, a selection of curriculum people come in to evaluate the proposals, they are participating in the recommending, selecting, and perhaps contracting of the vendor, and therefore, they have now become an agent and a local government officer to which Chapter 176 applies. If 176 applies to local government officers, you are required to file a Form CIS, and that form is available on the Texas Ethics Commission website. Importantly, Chapter 176 also applies to vendors. It's two-sided. It applies to local government officers and to the vendor. And a vendor is defined as a person who enters, or seeks to enter, into a contract with a school district. So even if someone applies, submits a proposal in response to a competitive procurement, and so they're seeking to do business with you, but they're not ultimately awarded a contract, they are still subject to Chapter 176 and should file, in their vendor packet, in their proposals, a Form CIQ. The forms have been updated as of September 1, 2015, and again, those are available on the Texas Ethics Commission website. There's the CIQ form, that's for vendors, and the vendor has to file that CIQ if there's a business relationship, not later than the 7th Business Day after the date the vendor becomes aware of the facts that require the statement to be filed. There's three categories of information that are listed on Form CIQ. It asks about income, gifts, and family relationships. Importantly, the CIQ does not have to be notarized. The CIS, that, the form that applies to you guys as trustees, as well as anybody else who fits within the definition of local government officer, does have to be notarized. It still, the same timeline applies, the 7th Business Day after you become aware that a conflict exists. In addition to expanding the definition of local government officer under Chapter 176, the legislature also added a brand-new category to which the conflict of interest rules apply. In the old law, it was only for certain income and gifts, and now they've added a new section for family relationships. First, what income disclosure triggers your obligation to file a Form CIQ? First, if the school district contracts or is considering contracting with a vendor, and the vendor has an employment or some other business relationship with you, or someone else who is an LGO, that results in you or a family member receiving taxable income in excess of $2,500 in the 12-month period preceding the date that you become aware of the contract, or of the prospective contract. Notably, it's taxable income. It does not include investment income. So if you have invested $2,500 or more in a particular company, and they are seeking to do business with you, that doesn't count. It's only if it's taxable income. The second category that needs to be disclosed are gifts, and that's when a school district is contracting, or considering contracting with a vendor, and the vendor has given the school official or a family member one or more gifts that have an aggregate value of more than $100. Previous law, it was $250. This past session, that threshold got lowered to $100. And finally, the gift disclosure exceptions. Prior to this past legislative session, you did not have to disclose gifts if they were lodging, transportation, entertainment, or food accepted as a guest. No longer do we have the lodging, transportation, or entertainment exceptions. The only exceptions now are food that's accepted as a guest, or political contributions. So, for example, in the Houston area, you know, vendors very often took school district officials out to an Astros game, or a Texans game, or golfing, including, for example, buying a foursome in the Education Foundation's golf tournament to raise money, and would take trustees or other local government officers. And that was fine, because entertainment accepted as a guest was an exception. No longer is that an exception. Does that mean you can't play golf, that you can't go to a baseball game, or to some other outing? No. What it does mean, though, is if it costs $100 or more, you have to file the Form CIQ, and the vendor has to file the Form CIS. So we joke now in our office that we can't take you golfing anymore, we can only feed you really well. So, the third, brand-new category for conflict of interest rules is the family relationship disclosure, and this is brand-new. Again, it applies if school districts, if the school district contracts with a vendor, is considering contracting with a vendor, and the vendor has some sort of family relationship with you as the school official, without regard to any monetary amount. For this, except, for this to be triggered, for this conflict to be triggered, there's no money has to necessarily exchange hands. It's if you're related to the person, within the third degree by consanguinity, or the second degree by affinity. So the first degree is parent-child, second degree is grandparent, grandchild, sister, brother, and then third degree, great-grandparent, great-grandchild, aunt, uncle, niece, or nephew. So if any of those situations arise, that also triggers the requirement to file the Form CIQ. There's a couple of different provisions relating to conflict of interest that aren't in either Chapter 171 or 176. One is specifically with regard to a depository bank. Any trustee who is a stockholder, officer, director, or employee of a bidding depository bank for the district may not vote on awarding that depository contract to the bank. Secondly, with regards to nonprofit corporations, a trustee may serve on the board of a private nonprofit corporation, a 501(c)(3), but only if the trustee receives no compensation from that corporation or other nonprofit. What are the penalties for violating the conflict of interest rules? They're pretty significant, especially if it's a high-dollar contract, and the varying degrees of the offense are based on what the contract amount is. It's a class, goes from Class A to Class C misdemeanors, depending on the contract amount that's listed there. But, and this is an important but, there is a grace period. If you file that conflicts disclosure statement by the 7th Business Day after receiving notice of an alleged violation, then you're not, you're not going to be found to have violated 176. And so it's a knowing requirement. That is, if you receive notice that you have violated, whether that's from the superintendent or from a member of the community, anyone, that you have a potential, that you have a conflict and that you have not filed the Form CIQ for, as long as you do so within the 7th days after receiving that notice, then you should be fine. But employment actions can still be taken against school officials for noncompliance. So if you have local government officers who are your employees, and they do not file the Form CIS like they're supposed to, even though they wouldn't be subject to criminal penalties, as a district, you could still take employment action and reprimand them for not following the law, and following the policy. Also, you have an option to void a contract if a vendor does not file a Form CIQ. That's a new option under HB 23. Included in your policy in BBFA Exhibit is a chart that's done by Tasby Policy Services that outlines the required conflict of interest disclosures, and that includes 171 as well as 176 there. The bottom line with regard to conflict of interest is that these are separate requirements. The affidavit and abstention from further participation requirements under 171 doesn't fulfill 176 requirements, that if there's a conflict under Chapter 176, you still need to file that Form CIS, the sworn conflict of interest disclosure statement. A very brief note, Mickey and I do a up to two-hour presentation on EDGAR, which is the new law that applies to, anytime you're using federal money, if it's, you're using a penny of federal money, EDGAR is going to apply. EDGAR has a very specific conflict of interest rule, so if federal money applies, EDGAR's going to apply, and EDGAR's conflict of interest statement says that no employee, officer, or agent may participate in the selection, award, or administration of a contract supported by a federal award, in other words, for which you use federal money. If there is a real or apparent conflict of interest, under the law, it says that a conflict arises when any of the following has a financial or other interest in, or a tangible, personable benefit from a firm or from a vendor that's considered for a contract, an employee, officer, an agent, any person of that immediate, any member of that person's immediate family, that person's partner, or an organization which employs, or is about to employ, any of those that are listed above, or has a financial interest in the vendor selected for award. So you'll see where the federal rule is much broader than the state rule. For the state rule to apply, you actually have to have a conflict, you have to have received certain income, have a substantial interest in a business entity or property, et cetera. The federal rule prohibits even an apparent conflict of interest. So if federal money is involved, it's incredibly important to ensure that it's an arm's-length transaction, and that no conflicts arise. Brand-new, technically, it's not a, quote, "conflict" law, but it's a, called Disclosure of Interested Parties, and this was passed, this past legislative session, a House Bill 1295, added a provision of the government, to the government code, that's codified in your Tasby Policy CH legal. And contrary to 171, remember I pointed out that it was written as a positive statement, that you may enter into a contract so long as you, as a trustee, abstain from further participation and file the sworn affidavit if a conflict arises. Here, it's written in the negative. A governmental entity, which includes a school district, may not enter into a contract that's subject to 1295 unless the business entity submits a disclosure of interested parties, which is called a Form 1295, at the time the business entity submits the signed contract to the school district. The disclosure requirement applies anytime that the business entity contracts with a governmental entity, including a school district, and the contract either requires an action or vote by the governing body, i.e. the Board of Trustees, before the contract may be signed, or has a value of at least $1 million. And here's where it's, a prime example of, it's so important that one word can make all the difference in the world, because we've been told that initially, when this bill was put forth, it was intended for that "or" to be an "and." And think about how, what a different landscape that would be for 1295, if it had, only, if it was contracts that only required an action or vote by the governing body, "and" was up for $1 million or more. Now, because it's an "or," any contract, regardless of dollar amount, if it's being brought to the Board of Trustees to vote on, a Form 1295 must be submitted. And there's lots of rules that have come out from the Texas Ethics Commission about how to fill out the form, what the form has to include, et cetera. I've been told your administration has that all taken care of, and I've provided them with lots of information about the ins and outs of that, and so they will be taking care of that. Any questions regarding conflict of interest or the new 1295 requirements? Lots of questions. Good.
No, go ahead.
Actually, this is for Dr. Littor-
Actually, this is for Dr. Delatorre or his team. Have any of the CIS or CIQ forms been filed with the district?
Yes, we all filed them manually. And there's a window, and I think it's consistent with your window to file your form, and we typically identify those individuals that participate in the procurement process.
Okay.
The evaluation committee members. And I think at one time, we discussed why it was difficult to get individuals to participate on the committee, the selection committee, who maybe worked for other school districts or for other entities that were maybe not governmental entities, and that is that we'd have to go through this entire process before they could participate. Some people would be less willing to sign those forms, so we keep it internal.
And those forms are posted online?
Yours certainly are posted.
I know ours are, but...
I don't know that staffs are posted.
Yeah, all of them. And I failed to mention that, that by law, all forms, even if they don't list any disclosures. So for example, if a vendor who is seeking to do business with the district files a Form CIQ because it's part of the procurement process and part of the vendor packet, and just lists "not applicable" or "none" or something like that, even those still have to be posted on the district's website.
And I believe Ms. Gerlach, who regulates those selection committees, has those forms available for all of the members in the process. And then they go into that file and is available to the public.
Great.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the conflict of interest for a vendor, say, for example, we have either a friend that works for one of our vendors as an administrator. Would that be considered?
So...
Or is it just the vendor itself?
So Chapter 176 applies both to local government officers. So in your example, it would depend on whether or not that administrator meets the definition of local government officer. Do they participate in the selection, recommendation, awarding of the contract to where their 176 would be triggered? Then if they meet one of the three outlined, not exceptions, outlined criteria, income, gifts, or family relationship, then the administrator would have to file a Form CIS, and then the vendor would also have to file the Form CIQ. It's a dual requirement. One doesn't satisfy the other.
Go ahead, Ms. McLean.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
That EDGAR law, does that apply to the E-Rate funds?
So that's an excellent question, and one that is of much debate. And Mickey and I have debated this, and we have contacted the various E-Rate consultants, and right now, as well as TEA, and as of today, we do not believe that EDGAR applies to E-Rate. Your recommendation would be?
Our recommendation is...
Yeah. And oftentimes, particularly with, at the time of procurement, EDGAR has very specific procurement rules as well, and particularly if you're spending more than $150,000. At the time of procurement, you may not know if you're spending only state money or if you're spending a combination of state and federal money. And so our advice has been, go ahead and comply with EDGAR and do the various things that are required under EDGAR for procurement in case you do get a federal award and you're spending federal money. Because importantly, again, as I mentioned, it's a cent. You get one penny of federal money, EDGAR applies.
Out of abundance of caution, that would be
Right.
the best course to take. And my second question would be to Dr. Delatorre, and you know, now that this law, the 176 applies to, could apply to individuals that work for the school district, is this training being afforded to them?
Not to the depth that we've just been exposed to. As a matter of fact, this is probably the most detailed presentation that we've received relative to training. It's certainly something we can provide to those individuals who regularly participate in evaluation committees.
This year, we added the conflict of interest piece to the employee handbook training, so all employees within the entire district will be notified of the need to notify.
Right. But I mean, we need to be, I think, more proactive and not expect that the employees are all going to read the whole manual, right?
No, no, no. It's actually a part of the presentation that they receive at the beginning of the year. They sign for that. It's a specialized piece of the PowerPoint. That'll be presented face-to-face by each administrator to each employee within the district.
That's wonderful. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
At this time, I think we should take about a 10-minute recess for a health break.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Really hard.
Yes.
Always good.
Okay.
I'm like, my mom's too excited, I'm like.
Yeah.
I'll make fun.
All right.
Great.
Yes.
No one?
Got everyone now? Good, here we go.
See my email for our conversation, I know we haven't talked yet, but we're probably well.
Come on, people. I'm not sure, see, I'm not even sure when I do these things. Yes, I thought, yeah, I thought that it was a long to- a long topic and I just kinda needed to stretch a little bit, I was getting, it was a little hard for me to concentrate. I'm just gonna go for it. We recon- reconvene at 7:56. And we continue on with our board reports. It, it's on there.
And at this time, we are on agenda item number four, and that is any questions or conversation with our internal auditor. Is she still with us? Here she comes.
Good evening, everybody. This is Champagne. Any question?
Do we have questions for Ms. Champagne?
Yes. I've just got one quick question. I know we've talked a little bit more during the last workshop that we had with you with regard to more of all encompassing reports to, you know, to the board with regard to trends, you know, several years' worth of data. Is that in the process, or where are you on that?
What we have done is I discussed with a department and what we, the process we take is we test a transaction of one year, and then with three years' data analysis. We start with the campus or the department we audit. Now, if I remember correctly, you are also interested in seeing overall. So, for example, like this summer, we have several, actually many campuses audits. So, hopefully by September, we should be able to wrap up every schools. So for now, when we issue every school, you see there's three years of budget analysis in there. And at the end of the September, we will have a summary of the, all of these schools and kind of a quick recap. What are the things we saw pretty in common? Is that what you were looking for?
Right, that, that's what I'm looking for. So I hadn't seen anything in the reports that you've given us so far, so I was wondering, you know, when we would expect to see that type of reporting to the board. You know, and not just, you know, campus type of information that you gather, which of course, that's where you have the most volume of work, right, but also audits that you redo that are programs or central office type of audits. That, that you do more in-depth analysis, more than just the one audit, but taking several years of that data and putting it together in one report.
I think it depends on the area we look at. We have a plan to revisit the SPABA because, and, but with a new regulation and new structures. So at that time, we will be able to compare what we had and what we have now. Now, are the audits, like it, I tend to take the more conservative approach is we will look at a trend after we audit, rather than predict it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I understand, and I know that some audits are lending themselves more to that type of an analysis, but I think that, that is one component of your work that I, that I see where we could, you know, as a board, get a more of a global understanding of what has happened in the past and the trends for the future, is if you were to provide the board with that type of, of an analysis. And I think, you know, for me, it would be helpful to have that type instead of just reporting on each individual audit result.
Okay, let me, let me look at the process and structure. And then in our 16th workshop, I, I hope to have something to, to share with you. For now, what I have in mind is, is after several audits, then we could see the trend. But I think you are not looking at that way. I think you're looking at having a different audit approach, rather than just audit one school, but I think you're looking at more like if we audit a school and then we want to have a trend of District Y, what is the attendance? District Y, what is the fixed assets? That would require different audit process and different transaction review than, than what we do now, because what we do now is we have one school change in leadership, we do that school's muscle manuals, like, it, it starts a report of the, the that organization's, kind of a snapshot assessment.
And I, and I'm talking more like you mentioned, you know, the, the type of information that you gather in all your audits, putting all of that information together annually, say, you know, your campus audits, not your reviews, because obviously you can't put that into a trend or a historical, because each, each individual school is different and each principal's going to recommend and, and you know, have those insights that are very unique to that school. What I'm talking about is you do how many, you know, 20, 30 school campus audits a year, right? Gathering all that information and then doing some trend analysis. And I don't think it would take any more, more auditing work, it would just, you know, putting that information together to do a more comprehensive report on the issues that are important to the schools, or issues that are important to the board, or, you know, issues that you find are interesting or necessary for the board to understand and be aware of.
I think Ms. Lieber may have something to offer.
So Ms. McLean, I, I empathize actually with, I think, what you're asking for. In an effort to determine what kind of progress we could make on fixed asset exceptions and on the snapshot, I asked Champagne to summarize for me, tell me in one table what you're finding so that I know what I'm shooting for. And I think we might be able to summarize something like that for you with regard to those four or five key areas she looks at every year. We've just now developed the baseline for that, and what I think we can do from there is give you a snapshot of what we're seeing, and I'll probably do it on a quarterly basis so I can make sure that we are making progress towards those goals. But it is just a very simple Excel table that says I audited these six schools and here was their exception rate, and then we're going to track comparatively for the next five years, how do we do in each of those categories? Would that help?
Exactly. That, that's more of what, you know, I've been hoping to see. And one of the things that caught my eye here recently, since my mom's passing, I've been able to review a lot of these old, you know, the last five years of board information. And one of the things that I noticed in the audit report was how many, back in 2010, how many calls to the hotline there were in comparison to now. And so, you know, that surprised me that, that the volume of calls had decreased so much, you know, where we, now we get one or two, back then it was like 10, and I thought, wow, you know, I wonder what happened there, you know, so anyways, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Champagne.
Okay, thank you.
We will now review the August 10th agenda as listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting. Is discuss agenda items as listed in the posted notice of regular meeting of Isleta ISD Board of Trustees for August 10th, 2016, and related recommended motions with the Superintendent and Executive Cabinet, and receive responses to questions and/or requests for additional information through the Superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said items at the August 10th, 2016 regular board meeting. Start with consent items, number one, number 1605. Approve the resolution supporting the designation of the Casner Range as a national monument. Are there any questions on that one? Ms. Duñias?
Uh, yes. Who is presenting this?
It says, Public Relations.
But for all intents and purposes, we were contacted by Representative O'Rourke's office, who's concerned about the development of the Casner Range. And he's asked the school districts in the area to consider being advocates for limiting development up on the Casner Range, and one of the ideas that he has presented is that at some point, we would develop curriculum or a unit that would expose students to the wildlife and other elements and features of that range as an educational field tripper, as an educational experience.
Any more questions? Okay, consent item number two, number 1557. Approve YSD contract number 20160441 with CVS Pharmacy, Inc. to provide practical experience to students that are enrolled in Pharmacy Technician Course Program, shall become effective upon execution by the second signatory and will thereafter automatically renew for one-year terms, provided either party may terminate this agreement upon 10 days prior notice at no cost to the district and contingent upon legal counsel review and approval of contract. Are there any questions? I actually have a question about that one. I was wondering, is this contract similar to the one that we have with other pharmacies in the area? Or does it add some new component to the, to the pharmacy tech program?
Ma'am, it, it would be identical to various, to the Walgreens affiliation that we have.
Anybody else have any more questions? Thank you very much. Number three, number 1593. Approve YSD contract number 20160472 with Texas Tech University Health Services Center to provide psychiatric medical services at the Comprehensive Care Center during the period of date of execution to June 30th, 2017, and the amount of $23,500 from federal funds. If notice of termination has not been given by either party at that, at the time of expiration, this agreement shall be automatically renewed on a year-to-year basis, not to exceed three one-year renewals contingent upon legal counsel review and approval of contract. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Ms. Duñias?
Yes, I'd like to pull that agenda item, and I was wanting to request that Ms. Michelle Noonan be present on Wednesday.
Uh, any other questions? Number four, number 1595. Approve YSD contract number 20160476 with Isleta del Sur Pueblo for the implementation of the TWA, did I say that correctly? Language program at Isleta High School during the period of August 11th, 2016 to August 31st, 2017, at no cost to the district. Are there any questions? I just want to say, I don't know who came up with this idea, but it sounds so fabulous. I can't wait to see it in, in place. I really think it sounds great.
Is this the first time?
Yes, Ms. Duñias, this is the first time, this is inception. We're gonna do it as a local credit, and our hope is to make it into a state credit by next year.
Wow, good.
Okay, consent item number five, number 1592. Ratify the annual YSD contract number 20160468 with El Paso County Juvenile Board to continue the operation of the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program at Cesar Chavez Academy for certain districts in Region 19 during the period of August 1st, 2016 to July 31st, 2017, and may be renewed thereafter on a year-to-year basis and remain in effect until terminated by any party at no cost to the district. Do we have questions? Number six, which is number 1594. Ratify YSD contract number 20160419 with El Paso Community College District, the University of Texas at El Paso, an education service center, Region 19, to enter into a data sharing collaborative agreement during the period of July 1st, 2016, and continue for a period of three years, and may be renewed for two consecutive three-year terms at no cost to the district. Mr. Ramirez, you have a question?
Ms. Woodruff, I'd like to have that pulled, and that way I can abstain on the vote, as the college is my employer.
Okay, we have that. Okay, we have that down. Any other questions on that? No? Okay. Number seven, 1608, approve change order number one to YSD contract number 20160448 with AO General Contractors for the adjustment of five portable locations from the initial design for the Valley View Middle School Project and the amount of $25,660 from local funds. Do we have questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask.
Go ahead, Ms. Duenias.
I guess it's Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. O'Neill, how many portables are there right now?
There will be a total of eight. We had to relocate five. When we started this process last February, we put five, we were planning to put five of the portables where they had had portables in the past to hook up electricity. It'd be the least expensive to do it that way. Then when the architects came in, they're going to end up, that's where the new elementary is going to be, where those five portables are, where we were planning for them to be. So we had to move them. We could have waited until next year when they actually started the construction, but then it would have been a lot more expensive to relocate them, to hook up all the electricity. So we said, now is the best time to do it.
That's what I was going to say. Is the electricity a problem right now or?
No, ma'am. We're just waiting to get it hooked up and we'll be good to go.
So there won't be any problems with the electricity, especially with the construction and everything?
No, ma'am. We're working with the electric company. There should not be any issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to consent item number eight. Ratify amendment number 14 to YSD contract number 21040312 with the Texas Workforce Commission for the Adult Education and Literacy Grant Year Three during the period of July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2017 and the amount of $2,669,128 for the consortium from various district funds for and for any subsequent contract extensions authorizing the superintendent or designated to sign a letter of agreement and any subsequent documents in connection with the application, acceptance, and admission of such funds, including grant amendments. Do we have questions? Ms. Duenias?
Yes. Does, what schools or what students are going to be affected by this?
Good evening, Ms. Duenias. This is for the Adult Learning Center. And so far, it's for adults. This is a consortium, the grant that we receive, and this is the services that we provide through Adult Learning Center with Mr. Louis Martinez.
Oh, okay. So it's not for students?
Well, it's our adult students.
Okay.
Yes.
Not high school?
No, ma'am. No.
Okay. So now we're at consent item number nine, number 1597, approve award of YSD solicitation number 216051 RFP, workers' compensation third-party administrator during the period of September 1st, 2016 to August 31st, 2016 with a possibility of three one-year extensions for $159,965 from various district funds. Do we have questions? Number 10, number 1599, approve award of additional list of vendors for the supplier base for YSD solicitation number 216050 RFP, student and/or parent programs activities, 21st Century Grant Part Three during the period of September 1st, 2016 to August 31st, 2017 with the possibility of a one-year extension for $100,000, which includes original Parts One and Two and Title Four, Part B, 21st Century Community Learning Centers, funds contingent upon Form 1295, Certificate of Interested Parties. Any questions? Number 11, which is number 1604, approve award of additional list of vendors for supplier base for YSD solicitation number 216045 RFP, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Services and Support Materials, Part Two during the period of August 11th, 2016 to July 31st, 2017 with a possibility of two one-year extensions for $1,500,000, which includes original Part One from various district funds contingent upon Form 1295, Certificate of Interested Parties. That takes us to number 12. 1630, approve an increase in the project amount for awarded YSD solicitation number 215036 RFP/RB2, district repair projects of limited scope, rebid, changing the original not to exceed $24,999 per project amount to $50,000 from various funds. Do we have questions?
Yes.
Ms. Duenias?
What schools are these going to be or?
What this will allow?
Or projects?
Yes, ma'am. This is for any repair project that is less than $50,000. It's my understanding that prior to the previous administration, it was capped at $50,000 and the board had made a decision to go down to 24,999. But what that does to us is that at times will force us to do an after-the-fact ratification. For example, if you look at project number 13 and 14, this would be a prime example. When the, they were doing the lights for the softball and baseball field, they went to hook up at the transformer at Bel Air and at Parkland High School, and they found out that it was in need of repair, that it, really, we have to rewire. And the cost would be $30,000 for each one of them. And so we'd like you to consider going up to $50,000, the cap. But in this case, it's for any repair project. We'd still notify the board that this was happening.
But is this bond or?
No, this is from funds, local funds.
Local funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask the question? When you say rebid, what are you, what are you talking about on the?
Okay, I'll refer to that question. That's a finance question.
Ms. Christine's coming to answer. I'm not sure why it's a rebid. I wasn't here.
Okay.
Madam Vice President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Delatorre. So rebid normally means that we had a concern with the original solicitation. It could have been, we didn't have sufficient responses. It could have been that we didn't have any responses or the responses we had didn't meet our needs. So we actually had to resolicet this from the original one. And that would have been a number like two years ago. So rebid just means that we went out and advertised again.
Is this aside from the ones you have now or?
I'm sorry?
Rebiting, rebidding or what?
It's the exact same solicitation. It just means that we advertised it to the public again. We rebid it to the public again.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so now we're at number 14, 113, I'm sorry, 131631, ratify an increase in the amount of $7,681 for awarded YSD solicitation number 215036 RFP/RB2, district repair projects of limited scope, rebid to, changing the original not to exceed $24,999 per project amount to $32,680 for Bel Air High School rerouting of power to feed stadium light poles from various funds. Ms. McLean?
I guess this question applies to 13 and 14. With regard to these projects, why is bond money not being used for the routing of these electrical?
Because it wasn't part of the bond scope. We did not, when we went out for the bond, we didn't say that we were going to replace the transformers for the football lights at these two schools.
Thank you.
So then moving on to number 14, number 61632, ratify an increase in the amount of $6,881 for award YSD solicitation number 215036 RFP/RB2, district repair projects of limited scope, rebid to, changing the original not to exceed $24,999 per project amount to $31,880 for Parkland High School rerouting of power to feed stadium light poles from various funds. Do we have questions? The number 15, number 1591, approve Isleta contract number 20160470 with Webcentric Alternative Certification Program to establish a partnership for the completion of clinical teaching experience during the period of August 15th, 2016 to August 15th, 2017 at no cost to the district. Number 16, number 1583, approve YSD contract number 20160461 with Grand Canyon University to allow students to participate in student teaching internships, practicum, and observations at schools located in the district during the period of August 15th, 2016 to August 15th, 2017 at no cost to the district. Number 17, number 1612, approve the goals and objectives for the 2015, 2016, 2017 campus improvement plans as required in policy BQ legal.
I have just one, one question. The goals and the objective improvements, what is that on that? Can you explain that a little bit?
Yes, the district, we have a district improvement plan and we have a campus improvement plan. There is required by using federal funds, any organization who uses federal funds needs to have a campus improvement and a district improvement plan. And the neat thing about our district improvement plan and campus improvement plan, it actually follows Vision 2020. So there's five goals and all those targets are set for. So basically, the campuses add how they're going to measure the progress and how they're going to attain each goal.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving to number 18, 1613, approve the goals and objectives for the 2016, 2017 district improvement plan. Number 19, number 1606, update annual board operating procedures 2016, 2017. Any questions?
Ms. Woodruff, I'd like to pull that one.
I have a question on that one, just to see if, because I thought that there was a change proposed from three to two trustees requesting a special, from three trustees requesting a special meeting to two. And I thought I saw that same, same thing still documented in the document.
What page is that on, Trustee Woodruff? Do you have it in front of you? If not, we'll find it.
I don't, I don't have it on in front of me.
Which one? I'm sorry. What was it? What's the agenda item?
Placing items on the agenda.
Right.
Is that 18?
It was special, the meeting.
18?
Yes.
That's page 299 through 398, I mean, three.
The special meetings may be called by the board president or by three trustees. And I thought we were changing that to two. Is it? One H.
Are we on 18 or 19?
We are on 19.
Oh, okay. Well, then I also have a question.
Okay, Ms. Duenias.
Are these the, the board operating procedures we just did not too long ago?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have anything else we want to add to that? Good. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay, number 20, number 1600, accept monthly financial statements as identified in a separate index, including quarterly investment reports as of May 31st, 2016 and June 30th, Okay, number 21, approve budget amendments requiring board action. Ms. McLean?
So I had, as part of my questions, this one was one of my, my questions. With regard to the monies that are being used to pay for the Isleta Adult Learning Center Director coming from plant and maintenance, that troublesome to me that those monies from maintaining our buildings going in to fund a salary of a director. So I'm not comfortable with that, those monies being changed, considering that, you know, the bay has not been painted since it was built. And we're saying, we don't have monies to paint the building that is 30 years old paint. But now we're going to move monies from that same budget that would be used for such things and putting into a salary, which should have been, should have been budgeted for during the budget process. Right? So I have, I'm not comfortable at all with that, with the movement of those monies.
I'm going to let Ms. Haney come and explain. It's actually a swapping of positions and costs, but I'll let her explain it in more detail.
Good evening. So it's not really taking money away from maintaining our buildings. The grant has continually been declining in the amount that we've been awarded from the state. So in the past, in an effort to help continue to support this grant, we have taken on paying for the custodians and salaries and the custodial supplies for the Adult Learning Center out of our local funds. This year, we had the previous director retire and Mr. Martinez was placed there. The salary that Mr. Martinez is receiving is much higher than the previous director. And the grant couldn't afford to pay for that salary anymore because the continuing decline in the amount the state's awarding us. So in an effort to continue to support the program, all we're doing is swapping it. We're going to move those custodial supplies and salaries that we've been paying for from our local funds. We're going to put that back into the grant. And then we're going to take the salary for the director out of the grant and pay for that out of our local funds. So nobody's losing any money to maintain buildings. It's just a swap between the local funds and the grant.
So you're telling me that in the past, 100, whatever that amount was, I don't think I have it here, whatever that amount was, was being, it's an exact exchange? So the monies that were being used for supplies and maintenance personnel is the exact amount that we're swapping out now with?
We're.
The director's salary?
We're swapping out $75,000 from the maintenance to go towards $134,000 of leadership and then we're picking up the rest out of other leadership funds. we're picking up the rest out of other leadership funds. It's not out of maintenance. We're, the difference between the two, we're going to pick up out of our contingency for the Function 23 code.
Right, so you're, okay, so you're taking the 298, is that the contingency?
No, no, this one is, the Adult Learning Center is the 134,000. The 298 is a different amendment.
And so what was that money for? The 298 from the fund balance that was being used?
That one is for support of TIS contracts that are already in existence that we did miss in budget development.
Now, how did that happen? I, you know, if it's an ongoing expense, how did you miss it during the?
These are, these are actually new contracts for all of the new things that have been put in place over the last year, so that, they don't actually begin these contracts until sometime during fiscal '16-'17. We didn't have a complete list of that as we were doing budget development. We now have that completed. We realized that we were short. That's why we're bringing that to you, asking for use of fund balance to cover those.
Go ahead, Mr. Remedes.
Ms. Haney, I don't know if it's Ms. Haney's question or somebody else. The reduction in the workforce grant, is that just a normal governmental thing that's happening, or is it based on performance?
Mr. Ramirez, it's my understanding, it's just the dwindling effect of that particular grant, and I believe there's going to be a new cycle of grant coming in in the next year or two, if I believe that, if I'm correct on that. But I can double-check, just to give you certainty.
And the reason I asked the question was just, myself and a couple of other trustees, we attended their graduation, and the interim, or the outgoing, I guess, director.
Mr. Nava.
Mr. Nava, made a comment about performance issues, or challenges, I'm sorry, not issues, challenges. And I guess I'm still concerned about that.
Yes, and the challenge for him was as the dwindling, the dwindling funds because of the grant, because he knew that in the next year or so, the grants were going to come down. However, it's my understanding, though, maybe a renewal of that grant, we just don't know the amount at this point. It's just estimated. That was a discussion we had when Mr. Martinez came on board.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to pull that item.
Okay, moving on to number 22, number 1602, accept three individual donations to YSD, each exceeding $5,000 for various purposes as listed on the backup sheet. No questions on that one? Okay. Moving on then to action items. And action item number one, number 1590, approve a price increase for lunch for full-paying students in the cafeterias for the school year 2016-2017, for the elementary school lunch from $2 to $2.10, and middle school and high school lunch from $2.25 to $2.35. Mr. Remedes?
I have a couple of things, and I guess maybe some concern here. When was the last time we had a price increase for lunches?
Mr. Ramirez, we had them last year. We did submit a waiver in order to try to eliminate the price increase this year, but TDA turned that down, so we had to increase the prices this year. But we did submit a waiver on that.
And I guess the other thing, and I don't know how you measure that, is that, is there going to be an issue for those students that do pay for their lunches? I mean, are we going to eliminate some kids because they've got to pay a couple cents more for a lunch?
We hope not. We hope not to, and that's why we do the minimum, which is 10 cents. We cannot do anything less than that. So that's why we do the minimum of 10 cents increase on the price. You probably do lose some students, but this is the Healthy Kids Act, that we have to do this. And like I said, we did try a waiver in order to, not to increase the prices, but it was denied, so that's why we had to do the 10 cent increase.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to number two, action item number two, number 1596, approve award of YSD solicitation number bond 0-08-CSP-BPO5, TLCC demolition package for $147,900 from bond funds. Are there any questions? Ms. Duenias?
Yes, I have a question on that. Does this include dumpsters and everything?
Yes, ma'am. It's a complete turnkey operation. Everything will be removed from that site.
Okay, no more additional?
No, there will not be any additional fees.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to action item number three, number 1611, approve change order number one to YSD contract number 20160456 with AO General Contractors, Inc., for portable location adjustment and replacement of non-compatible devices for Catwalter Elementary School Project in the amount of $8,902 from bond funds. Do we have a question, Ms. Duenias?
Yes. How many portables are there right now?
There'll be three portables at the new Thomas Manor for this next two years.
Oh, are they the ones that are being brought from Thomas Manor to Catwalter?
No, ma'am, they were other locations they came from.
Okay. And do we have existing portables already at Catwalter?
No, ma'am, those will be the only three.
Okay, because I see that the area itself is kind of small.
That's another reason why there's only three. Yes, it is a very small site. You are correct.
Okay. So there'll be enough, enough space for them to, the students to play in?
Yes, ma'am, there'll be plenty of blacktop area, and it does not affect the playground area.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to action item number four, 1637, approve change order number one to YSD contract number 20160449 with Martinez Brothers Contractors, LLC, to increase the fee by an amount of $63,458, and changing the substantial completion date from August 15, 2016 to August 26, 2016, the Riverside Middle School and Constance Halbert Elementary School Project, from bond funds and a contingent upon legal counsel review and approval of contract change order.
Yes, I'd like to have that pulled.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'd like to, well, I'd like, okay, well, then I'd like to also get some, like to see the contract, and if there is any penalty on the contract.
As far as not completing on time?
Right.
Okay, we'll bring that.
And I guess I'll ask the questions on, the rest of the questions on Wednesday. And let me see. What else did I? So the, I'd also like to know, what was the deadline? The 15th, right?
The original deadline, yes, ma'am, was the 15th, but when they ran the additional test, they found that it was going to require additional work, and that's the reason we're needing additional funds and additional days to make sure the project gets done.
What tests are they running?
I'm sorry?
What tests are they running?
They ran the borings, they ran a bunch of samplings, they ran six of them, where the structural engineer went and did the testing to make sure that's all around those four classrooms.
Okay. Because from what I recall, on our last meeting, which was, I believe, the 29th of June, everything was fine, and you showed us the picture of everything that was done and everything, and it's still up to, there was no, nothing done in three weeks. And I did not see any workers working there for three weeks. So everything was the same, and when I went back on Friday, everything was the same way. The only thing I saw was a plastic cover on the gravel, on the all four rooms. So I'm, I'm just a little skeptical about all this, that, and the deadlines on this.
Well, what had happened is once we got underneath the slab, and we started looking and ran the additional test, then they had to decide what was the best option for the school. Remember, when I'd made the presentation about the update, is we wanted a long-term solution. We didn't want a Band-Aid on it, we wanted a long-term solution. So there was a lot of discussion with the subcontractors and the, and the structural engineers, what would be the best option, and that's when they came up with the slabjacking. So you're right, for a point, the work had come to a stop while that decision was made. You are correct.
But, I mean, everything was fine the last day of June, that we had the board meeting, and there was, everything was all set, and everything was tacked till the 15th, and now we're getting that, nothing is fine? What changed in between? In three weeks, we never saw any workers there. I didn't see any workers. This is my way in and out from the community since they brought, they demolished the Carolina Bridge. So that's my way in and out from my community, and I don't see anything, any movement there. And every week I went, and every time I went in, there was not a lock on those doors, so anybody can walk in, in and out.
We will make sure that the site is safe.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, number five, action item number five, 1623, approve an order accepting the tax rule as approved by the 2016 Appraisal Review Board and certified by the chief appraiser. Okay, number six, 1622, approve an order setting the 2016-17 tax rate, including separate components for maintenance and operations of $1.17 and debt service of .305 for a total of 1.475 for $100 of valuation. Okay, moving on to policy action items. Policy action item number one, 1617, adopt SLATA specific revisions to policy DGBA local employee complaints slash grievances. Okay, number two is number 1618, adopt revisions to policy DB, DNB local evaluation of campus Then moving on to closed executive session, and then. Yeah. Action item number, oh, yeah, reconvening, and then the action item would be action regarding express scripts pharmaceutical rebates. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
One quick question. Dr. Delatorre, with regard to these contracts and MOUs that are on this agenda, who is reviewing? I know that it's reviewed by an attorney, but can we know who, what attorney's reviewing these now that we have different attorneys working on these contracts and MOUs? Can we find out who's reviewing what?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Someone?